We will move then to Resolution E and I will call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to move Resolution Number 32, 2017, Equilization Report.
Is there support?
Support.
By Commissioner Ponstein, questions or comments on this resolution? I am seeing none. This is a, this is not a roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to Resolution F and I call on Commissioner Hennessy.
I will move, I will move Resolution 33 for election software upgrade and after that I'll have an amendment.
Okay, is there support by Commissioner Corndyke and Commissioner Hennessy before we debate? You said you have an amendment.
I have an amendment in that we have received updated information on the cost of this equipment from the county clerk. It was not available when the Finance and Physical Resources Committee last met and approved this resolution. So I would move that this Resolution 427, 1733 be amended so that the transfer reflects the actual costs of the election equipment. And that would be $137,600 as opposed to the, it would be an increase from the $100,000 of the original resolution.
Support that as well.
And we have support by Commissioner Corndyke. So the first item on the table is this amendment to increase from 100 to 137,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, did you want to provide a little comment on that and then we can see if there's any questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the consideration and for the amendment to reflect the actual upfront costs. These are the upfront costs to the county for the new voting system that we will be implementing in many areas in this November's election. The costs are incurred based on the software that the county will use to program our elections and the ballots, as well as the hardware to utilize that system on election night reporting, software as well, and for the implementation, including training and support from, from the system.
Okay, are there any questions or comment on the amended, the motion, excuse me, the motion to amend?
Maybe this is the, thank you Chair. Essentially for us to make effective use of what the state's going to be providing. We need this software.
That's correct. We would have, we'd be incurring software, owning and managing software regardless of what system we put in, but the software is what allows the county, one, to actually set up and establish and program the election, but also to receive the information on election night from our locals and report that out as well.
So are there, are there particular functions? In other words, the system would work if we didn't do this, but there are particular critical functions that this allows us to do?
I don't believe the system will work without it because it's our requirement to report election results and we need the software to be able to report those.
Okay, so this isn't all that discretionary. We need to do this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Commissioner Talon.
Well, thank you Chair. This is, I guess about the system because the amendment applies to that, but I'm.
Well, just to be clear, the amendment is only changing the amount from 100 to 1,000 to 137. We'll have further debate on the overall motion after that.
I guess, in order to vote on that, I'd like to know a little bit more about the systems. I'm a little bit surprised that, first of all, that we're purchasing software and not using software that's in the cloud on a, what I assume is a statewide system. Is it different than what we have now in that regard?
Well, first, I just want to make sure, to clarify, that we don't have a statewide election, statewide election system, voting system. That's part of our, you know, that's part of our home rule and one of the reasons that we actually are, because we're so decentralized with home rule, it really helps ensure some of that security in our elections. But, so what we did through the process, the state and Sue, our elections director, Sue DeStager, served on that committee statewide, it's the Joint Evaluation Committee, to determine the qualifications of the new election systems. The law requires the county clerk in consultation with local clerks to select the system that's going to be used in, in their respective counties. And we pick that system based on what the state had determined in that, the qualified vendors. We had three vendors that we were, that we were to choose from. So it's not necessarily a statewide system. It's, each county selects what works best for their individual needs.
Do you have further?
Well, follow up. We do have a statewide voter database.
Yep, the Qualified Voter File.
Right, our local system interfaces with that to update that? Is that how that works or?
Um, I, no, because what this software, what this system is, is solely election and the voting system. In terms of, our software will allow us to make the ballots, program the elections. The software for our voting system is not the same or, or meant to replace the Qualified Voter File, which is the database of the voter information. This is, this is to conduct and administer the election itself as well as receive and report the, the results of the election.
Okay, Commissioner Ponstein?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Womack?
When we talk, well, I do have a question that I have to ask, but I did want to say that when it comes to the cloud software, I think it's very good that we're going to be buying the software because the cloud software, you have to continue to pay monthly and those prices can't change, but we'll probably be using some cloud storage that is as backup. But when she came, when Ms. Swanson spoke about us being on a DOS, I know that's just, you know, the public knows, everyone knows, that's just prehistoric. So we definitely have to move into some new software. But one, but one of the questions I did have before we did move to, to do a move for this amendment would be the extra 37,000, do they have any quick details on why there was that discrepancy between 100,000 and it came back to the 137?
It's a good question. Good question, thank you. At the time, we were still in negotiations with the three vendors and the actual costs would have varied depending on how those negotiations went first, you know, and the different variables that, that play into part in those negotiations. So without having an actual amount, we did know that there would absolutely be upfront costs that would be incurred. And as we went through the process, had we not moved, I didn't want commissioners to be blindsided, hey, I need, we need this money upfront right now because we're already implementing a system. We needed to make sure that we had, that you guys knew that this was coming at our best guest estimate and didn't want to also, you know, over, over predict our prices, our costs either because I didn't want, that would then become public record, which could impact the negotiations and our ability to get the best cost for the county.
Okay, thank you.
Very good point. Vice Sherboulter?
I just wanted to echo, I believe, and our clerk can confirm, but this was a state mandated requirement. We had to utilize three state-approved vendors and I just want to thank our clerk for kind of giving us a heads up that this was coming, even though you had to ballpark it. We really didn't have unlimited choices in what we were going to use, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talon?
Thank you Chair. Couple more questions. One is, I heard you say in your opening remarks that this would be implemented in many areas. So is the implication there that it's not going to be everywhere in November?
The, I, I thank you for the clarification. The implication is if you, if you're in Kent County and the municipality is having an election in November, it will be implemented in November.
Okay, all right. Everywhere in Kent County.
Yes.
Okay. And the second was a question that was raised earlier in executive about the ongoing maintenance costs.
Yep.
Do we have any information about whether those costs will be greater or less than the ongoing costs that we have for maintenance of our current system?
Admittedly, I'm not aware of what our, what our costs are currently, simply because we, if there's one thing I've learned comparing our vendors and what we have currently and what we're looking at is literally apples to oranges. But I can tell you that we expect our annual costs to be, which don't start, which don't start incurring to the county until years six through 10 in this contract. It's a 10-year contract. Our service and maintenance costs annually would be between, between 6 and 10,000 dollars. I'm not entirely sure what we pay annually for our maintenance right now. If, if you would like that, I'm sure Sue can answer that question for you.
Elections Clerk Sue DeStager, good morning.
Sue DeStager, Kent County Elections. We currently pay on our software that we've had for 12 years, since 2005 is when we implemented the current system. We have been paying $6,800 a year for software maintenance and over that course of years, we've had no updates. So that has just been to maintain the current software that programs the machines that the ballots go through and, as the clerk said, accumulates the results. So just for a little additional information, I know in the previous Finance Committee meeting, they thought the 100,000 was low for election equipment and I don't know if I was clear then, but the state does have 40 million dollars in leftover HAVA funds. So the first five years of our software license fee at Kent County and all the counties is covered under that 40 million. And the majority of the hardware costs that goes into every precinct is also covered in that 40 million. It's just these additional upfront costs that we will incur and many, all of the locals will incur a small amount also.
Sue also mentioned that currently what we're paying does not, is on software that's not been updated. Our annual maintenance and service costs will include software updates. So we're very excited about that.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Okay, so Sue, you may have just answered my question, but let me make sure. So the county will be paying 137,000 under this amendment. You say the state has 40 million. How much of that will come to Kent County? So what's the ratio of share, of shares of costs?
I kind of, roughly, between the leftover HAVA funds and what the legislature was willing to appropriate for this equipment, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, based on, you know, the tabulator costs and such, we're talking about half a million dollars. I've got, but that's just for the, that's just for this hardware. So I'm just trying to make sure I'm not missing anything for you, but yeah, we've got about Again, that's in the base components.
The way the state approached this, and as the clerk said, I served on that committee evaluating, drafting the RFP for the three vendors and evaluating and rating the different vendors. The leftover funds, in addition to what the legislator appropriate, legislature appropriated, the state decided they had enough to put the hardware, the basic hardware in every precinct in the entire state. So that basic scanner and the ADA compliance system. The additional fees each municipality will pick up are going to be for the modems, cellular modems. Per precinct, it averages around 5,000 dollars. Our system came in at around 43, 4,400. So the state's paying for that for 250 precincts. The state pays for that first five-year software agreement. Our upfront costs are including, as I said before, we program now on an XP. We have to have a dedicated server. Election systems cannot, software cannot be in a cloud. It cannot be connected to the Internet. So that's for the server, the B-drives that we program that go into each piece of hardware. That's for our listening modem to receive all of the cellular modems coming in on election night. But the original software for the county is covered under the 40 million plus, approximately 4,500 per precinct for the 250 precincts.
Thank you, that's clear. Thank you Chair.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you Chair. I just want to clarify that the amendment that we're discussing now takes the resolution and just changes the number from 100,000 to 137,600. Is that correct?
That is correct. However, in my opinion, we're addressing the next motion at the same time, so that one should go very smoothly. So Commissioner Stan?
Thank you Chair. I had the same understanding. I hate to kick the tires too hard, but is the, is the amendment that we're looking at now, the acquisition of just the software or does it include a contract for service extends over a 10-year period?
That's a good question. The amendment and the resolution you're looking at is simply to appropriate the costs. We will be, each, each county as well as local jurisdiction will be entering into a grant agreement to, to actually do, put the contract in place and that kind of thing. The State Bureau of Elections will be providing that to us and so we, we won't be doing a grant agreement until we get that. But we do know, because we've chosen our vendor and we've negotiated the costs, we know what those costs will be.
But are we, are we essentially, if we haven't legally, have we essentially committed to this 10-year contract by doing this, five years of which is covered by the grant? But five years from now, it will kick in for another five years and then what's the cost to the county then on an annual basis?
The cost to the county in years five through?
10.
Or six through 10 would be between 5 and 10,000 dollars.
I thought that was our cost now.
Nope, our cost now upfront will be 137,600.
And then no cost for five years?
Correct.
And then 5 to 6 to 7,000 dollars a year there. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the amendment? I think the sun is setting, it looks like. Very good then, we will call roll on the amendment.
You want roll call?
Yes.
The motion to amend. Commissioners Vonck?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Sherboulter?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Brevi?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Bulkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, no nays. The motion to amend is adopted.
Very good. Then we will go back to the primary motion, which is on the table with the amendment now in place. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Commissioner Talon?
I feel like the primary motion needs a comment. No, actually, just from my day job of knowing more than I wish I did about software security, having a decentralized, disconnected system for elections is so important and I applaud you for keeping that.
It is critical, thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein?
I'll keep it brief. Normally when I hear state mandates and monies and money being spent, I don't make it, but I'm going to give the state a break on this one. I think being good stewards of taxpayers' money and safe and secure elections for our republic, I'll just give them a pass this time.
Thank you Commissioner.
All right, any other questions or comments? I see none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion to adopt the resolution as amended, Commissioners Vonck?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Sherboulter?
Yes.
Commissioner Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Brevi?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Bulkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, no nays. The motion passes.
Thank you Madam Clerk. We move then to the final resolution and I call on Vice Sherboulter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go bittersweet. I proudly offer up, I'm sorry, Resolution 34 to appoint, the appointment of our interim county administrator.
Support? Support by Commissioner Corndyke. We will take questions and comments. First, I just want to say, you should have all received my memo last Friday with the recommendation to, to make Wayman our interim county administrator. I want to be very clear about one thing. There were certainly more candidates to, qualified candidates to consider and, and the selection of Wayman, please do not let that adversely affect on, create your perception of any other individuals that might have been in contention. I do want to go back to back on the day that Darrell announced his retirement and I said at the time that we were going to take this process seriously and do a very good job and if it took a while to do it, that was fine. I did get a few questions on timing. I do believe we're pretty much right where I thought we would be, so the fact that we are appointing an interim is entirely what I anticipated would happen as part of the process and in fact, I think that might be a good thing to have an interim person in place prior to the selection of the permanent. So I do see this as following our plan that was announced back in September of last year. And with that, I am wholeheartedly and confidently recommending Wayman. We have the motion on the table. Is there any other questions or comments on this motion? I am seeing none and this is not a roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We then move to our public comments, second round. One minute. Anybody here could provide public comments?
Hurry up.
You might actually be the first person that's ever utilized.
That's because he was late this morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Mike Gusswiler. I reside at 53 Rockview Drive in Rockford. I'm the president of the West Michigan Sports Commission and Monday, we hold our 11th Annual Luncheon. We've sent out invites to all of you. I'm glad that some of you are able to join us. If you've not responded, we'd love to still have you. It's significant because we celebrate 10 years of sports tourism and the county was instrumental in the formation of the West Michigan Sports Commission and continues to support sports tourism. So we'd love to have you as our guests and again, if you've not responded and you'd like to join, please do so.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I am seeing none, so we will move to reports. Reports of Commissioner, Commissioner Bulowski?
Yes, I'm happy to report, believe it or not, in spite of my propensity for lateness on deadlines, that the Friend of the Court Task Force has completed its work on time, having been given an extra month by the Chair. We'll, we'll work to have the, the report presented in its formal manner, but just wanted to, again, say that our work is done and quickly thank now the committee members who are here, Commissioners Corndyke and Voorhees, who helped mentor me in my first chairpersonship as a Commissioner.
Lot of heavy lifting there.
Lot of, lot of, lot of tearful nights. And then also, our new interim administrator, Wayman Britt, was also a member of that task force. So a lot of, a lot of, I'll just say, yeah, it was a lot of fun. But most importantly, the reason why we hit our deadline is Mary Swanson and Melanie Gruder's, Melanie had jury duty this week and still got minutes done, so, but Mary, again, kept us well on track, so, yeah, definitely thanks all around and look forward, forward to giving you the full report.
And thank you Commissioner for stepping up to be Chair of that committee. I want to note that the majority chose somebody from the minority to head up the subcommittee and he did a very good job, so we will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Well, thanks Mr. Chair. Just wanted to let everybody know our report to the community is out from the Gerald R. Ford, so it's interesting reading. If you have any questions on it, give Dan Corndyke a call.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you Chair Saulfeld. At the Legislative Conference at Michigan, I was elected to the MAC Board of Directors. Wanted to thank the Commissioners that were there and the other Commissioners around the state. Kind of a weird way to elect someone to that board, but there's six regions. I'd secured four. I don't think the end result was ever in doubt because of the work of this guy. The tiebreaker is the total amount of votes and after going around to the six regions to talk and to see the region we're in, had probably more people there than the rest combined. I think the tiebreaker was, was fair to say. Also at the conference, I ran into the NACO President. He had informed me that he appreciates the work I'm doing so much that he's appointed me to two other committees. I don't know if, if time's there, but part of those committees, I've been like three conference calls over the last couple of weeks and the lobbyists from NACO just basically say is, hold on to your seat because there are so many different moving parts, but there was a couple of things I did want to highlight. I've been talking about the muni bond, so is NACO, the local tax deducts. They had thought that that could be easily taken out. It isn't. Representative Kevin Brady, who's in charge of doing the tax reform, is basically going off of Speaker Ryan's book, The Better Way, on how he perceives the tax. Now, the good news, if there's any good news, is that NACO feels that those two items are going to be held as bargaining chips because they really want that tax cut too. So the assumption is that that might be used as bait to get bipartisan support for this tax reform. So still not too late to call your rep to say the importance of muni bonds. There's a lot of talk about infrastructure and what that's going to be at. We were reassured not to be waiting for that check because a lot of this infrastructure project budget is more, they want to loosen the requirements and to do these and, and kind of rein in government. So they're going to, they're figuring that with the reforms that they would make, it would take less time to get infrastructure projects together, which would then save you money and they're adding that potential savings to what they are calling an infrastructure bill. So that'll be interesting to watch. And the Healthcare Act, I mean, that's all over the place, but the common theme that's always there is they've got, they want to give it back to the states with a maximum flexibility. Hold on to that because I don't think the checks will be following to cover everything. So I'll try to keep the Legislative Committee more up to date, but it's interesting to see the different points of view and everything that's going on. It's happening really.
And you even had to campaign for that, didn't you?
Well, yes, I did. Did, did you guys get my?
All right, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you Chair. As Chair of the Finance Committee, we have a lack of agenda items for the next Finance Committee meeting, which is May 2nd. So we are going to cancel that and we will move the one agenda item that isn't time-sensitive to the next Finance Committee meeting. So I just wanted to let everyone know that that is, that's going to happen.
Commissioner Brevi?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to give a quick report on the LED Task Force. We met earlier this month. We heard from a LED inspector and that was really informative, so we're working on compiling our recommendations and we're staying on schedule. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, May 17 at 1 o'clock in this room. We'd love to have you join us.
Commissioner Hennessy?
I am one of the county's representatives to the Area Agency on Aging in Western Michigan and this is a group of nine counties in the city of Grand Rapids. And we had our annual luncheon on Monday, followed by the annual meeting. And through a confluence of situations and small counties having larger numbers, through whatever happened, it will be the first time that we will not have a representative of either Kent County or the city of Grand Rapids on the Executive Committee. And I'll just make note of that. It's, where smaller counties dominate in terms of numbers and the force that that brings, you know, it's not the first time we've seen this happen within government and I'll just make that note.
So noted. Any other reports? And, okay. and likes to involve the community when making decisions on these important matters. We move then to Agenda Item Number 11 miscellaneous. Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you. I just want to remind all members of the Land Bank Subcommittee, we have a meeting immediately following this board meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Corndyke.
Just a quick kudos to a couple of Commissioners, first of all. Commissioner Bulkowski did a great job with the FOC Subcommittee. Thank you very much for leading us through that process. It was very contentious at times, and I think we came to a consensus that everyone's going to be happy with. Thank you for your leadership in that. And also Commissioner Ponstein for stepping up to be involved in the NACO Board a few years ago when we worked, members of NACO. Commissioner came to me and said, well, why can't we be more involved with NACO? I said, well, we can if you will volunteer to be on the committee. Boom, he did, and he's doing a great job. So, thank you for that statement.
He's nationwide.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Jones.
While we're doing kudos, how fortunate is Kent County to have the depth of professional staff that we have in order to get our interim administrator, and I would like to recognize Mary Swanson also as an Assistant County Administrator. It was after hours last night. I had an issue that required prompt, responsive, timely, and professional response. She, I called, she answered, and the issue was addressed in a very timely manner with a number of phone calls. So this doesn't happen always and at other places, because I've talked to other Commissioners who don't have this piece, and I just want to express my gratitude for the consistent communication and, again, prompt, responsive, timely, professional people that we get to work with on this team, and it makes my job more pleasant and easier, and I'm grateful. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you. Just two quick things about stuff that was said during the meeting. I know Burgett mentioned Lake County, and, you know, that is one of our poorest counties, but, you know, one of their ongoing problems, and you can always say, when you've been to one county, you've been to one county, and maybe Lake County isn't like Kent County, but there's times that we need to stand up for each other. One of the biggest battles always on the state level and the federal is Lake County is mostly government-owned land, and there's no tax base on that. They're constantly fighting with the feds for the payment in lieu of taxes, and that's something that, even though it doesn't affect our county, it affects a lot of the people that we partner with. And as for the remonumentation, in my other life, I was a land surveyor for about 16 years, and Herald, those things that we put in the ground are about three feet. It's, whether it's clay, rock, you still have to dig through there. Hopefully, when I'm gone, I'll have the memory that at least somewhere in Kent County, there's something I planted.
Very good. Commissioner Mast.
Yes, okay, thank you. I just want to, you know, over the course of the last years or so, we've been keeping up on mental health issues and mental health stuff. It's heating up at the legislative letter, level, state legislative level between, continuing with our private, with our public mental health system, and the private HMOs are continually pushing to continue it in that. I'm going to be forwarding on some reminders that we've, as board members of Network 180, received from our association, Michigan Association Community Mental Health Boards, and just kind of passing it on to the, all the members of the board, because the Michigan Association of Counties is getting quite involved in this now, advocating on our behalf as well. Just maintaining our fine public mental health system and trying to advocate for that, because there's moves at the state level now to, and I think Kent County Community Mental Health System will benefit from this, but also throughout the state, just privatizing some of the system. So we need to, we need to keep our feet to the fire. And I will be sending out a copy of a memo that I just received, as of this morning, from Robert Sheehan, the CEO. And kudos to our Vice Chair's husband, who was doing lots of on-the-ground work to keep us informed. Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. Commissioner Melton.
Just a couple of things quick. I, through Commissioner Jones, went to a Parks and Rec breakfast and was introduced to an absolute brilliant group. I mentioned this at the Legislative, they are called the Dirty Dogs, and it's a group of students who use dirt by riding, not motorized, to get outside, to enjoy the parks. But they also give back by cleaning, by making suggestions of how the parks can get better. So there again is another example of, wonderful example, of young people teaching us who are older what it means to be active and be involved in their community. And the second part of that, I tell you, if I don't get to do anything else while I'm on the board, and I hope I do, I went to Kids Speak on Friday, the mayor youth group, and they spoke to, this year's topic was racism. Should we be a colorblind world? And I heard speakers all the way from down to one-third grader, all the way up to seniors in high school, and I cannot tell you, I could have sat there all afternoon. They were absolutely phenomenal. If you have any interest in how to be able to hear some of what they said, please let me know, because they spoke from their hearts, but they also spoke from knowledge, they spoke from personal experience, and it was absolutely just a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for me to be part of that. Last, ladies, you are amazing. Not only did you come and present, you were the first presenters. You have sat here for a very long time. I remember being your age, sort of, and you have at least acted as if you are engaged in what we're saying. I have not seen you fidgeting a lot. I truly am impressed and just very, very pleased to know that there are individuals who are younger that, when I am old and cannot remember who I am anymore, I will have persons like you to take care of me, and I really do mean that politely.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Some of us will be leaving here and going over to the Fair Housing Conference Luncheon. Also, over at DeVos Place today, or the next few days, is the meeting of the Michigan Dental Association. They're having their annual session. It's coming together of the dentists, the hygienists, the assistants, and office staff for a comprehensive experience of scientific learning, top clinical tips, display of equipment. It's all the newest and best of dentistry, and this comes from my sister, who will be among the people over there. But don't look for anybody who looks like me. You better look at the name tag. We don't look alike.
Commissioner Walback.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that when it comes to police relations and minorities, one of our cities here in Kent County, Grand Rapids, Michigan, was on ABC News, ABC World News, as well as some parents whose children were involved in an incident with the police were interviewed on CNN News. They've also made a national African-American magazine, Ebony Magazine. They have been featured on every national African-American radio show. So it looks like it's some work that has to be done when it comes to law enforcement and better relationships with minorities. On a brighter note, I do want to say that my first quarter here, first four months here, having the chance to work with Daryl Diablo has just been amazing, watching his work, and my only regret is that I wasn't here to see that whole 20-year. It's fascinating, even in my professional life at my workplace. Just watching Daryl's work, watching some of the work of Wayman, watching the different operations that come here and present the reasons they're going to need more funding. It's really raising the bar in my professional life, having the chance to watch you, Daryl, and I just really wanted to give you a kudos today.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Due to the time, I would like to propose we reschedule Land Bank for another, soon, a different date, just because we're at almost 11:00, and we still have to do our photo and some other items, so.
Okay.
Reschedule.
Then I just have three relatively quick things. Number one, next meeting, 5:11, we will get a report from Sandy Frost-Deensma, former Chair of the Board, who is chairing the Subcommittee regarding the recruiting and replacement of the administrator. Number two, we haven't mentioned it yet, but congrats to everybody for the county, again, receiving its AAA bond rating from both rating agencies. I've said before, I'll say it again, this is more than a financial thing. They look at continuity, they look at staff, they look at our litigation, they look at how we as a board get along and get stuff done. They look at all sorts of things. So I really do believe that the bond rating is as close as thing as we have to a report card, and I think it shows, should be a thing that not only the Board and the county, but all of our citizens should be proud of. And then finally, it was noted today, and we do, we've heard from these Subcommittee-led, the FOC and some of these others, you know, we have some important Subcommittee's working. Prior to 2015, our rules stated that after a Standing Committee completes its report, that the, that the Board can take any action it deems appropriate to address recommendations specifically delineated in report, and it says, "By way of example and not limitation, the body may approve, reject, table, or postpone the report recommendations or refer the appropriate Standing Committee for deliberation." Somehow, that got removed and never got replaced, which means, after talking with our counsel today, that if the Board wanted to approve one of our Subcommittee reports, it would create, require an amendment to the rules and a supermajority to approve it, which is never intended. I'm not sure what the thinking was in 2015 on why that got deleted, but I'm going to pass the Legislative Committee and Vice Chair Bolter to see if we can get that back into the rules where it should be so that the Board can take up a, and do the things that were outlined prior to 2015 with Subcommittee reports. I think that's very important, especially with some of the reports that are coming down the pike. So with that, I will, I have no other miscellaneous, and I will call on Commissioner Melton for an adjournment.
I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, May 11, 2017, at 10:45 for an official meeting.
It's at 8:30.
It's at 8:30.
Supported, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful, and you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veteran services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our County Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners, and they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.